Good morning and welcome to a special meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectment. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is a special meeting of the board. The revised agenda was sent out a week before. And on the agenda today under Old Business are two items. The first item is the approval of the Byron Park pool access policy, which is something that is referenced in a condition by the Board of Estimend Taxation for approval prior to their release of condition. The second item is the approval of a state office, historic preservation office, grant made to the Greenwich Point Conservancy for what is known as the Old Barn. That item will not be acted upon today. It is before the Board of, uh, before the RTM. And there are significant issues related to the grant and the encumbrances it would place, not only on the property but the town. So our legal department is working with the various committee members, Kip Berghuis specifically, to see if they can ameliorate those concerns so that the item is not voted down and thereby the Greenwich Point Conservancy does not receive the funds. But I think one of the lessons we've learned in this is that many of the grants that are offered by the state have very onerous language or requirements that it places upon the recipient. And prior to seeking those grants, I think a more thorough review should occur by the legal department so that we don't find ourselves in this situation. Certainly applaud the work that the Greenwich Point Conservancy does, but this did present serious issues of concern by our legal department and what it would mean for not only the building itself but potentially the part and its usage, so. I mean, do you want to welcome Barbara Hines? This is the first meeting. She's sitting in as the Executive Assistant for the First Selectment and Reporting Secretary for the Board of Selectment, so welcome Barbara.
Thank you.
To you, in your new role. Um, the, the new business item is a request from the Board of Education for municipal improvement. This pertains to the abandonment of portions of streets in proximity to the proposed new school. This is not a new subject. In fact, it was referenced during the prior MI for the, for the building, but it was sequenced to occur at the appropriate time. So this is that appropriate time. The Board has taken a position on MI's that we'd like to hear them at one meeting and then vote them at the next. So we revised our agenda to get it before us today so it can be presented, put out for more further public dissemination. And then with the idea that it would be approved next Thursday when our regular media occurs. So, does anybody have any questions on the agenda before we get in? Okay, so under Old Business, we have with us the Director of Proximity Recreation, Joseph Cicillano, and the Assistant Director, Tommy Greco. And we had before us last week, last meeting, the proposed Byron Pool Policy in draft form. And this has now been out for, I don't remember, last meeting, March 24th?
Two weeks.
Yeah. And so I, I mean, I would say I've only received maybe a half a dozen emails about it. In support of? In support of it, so I, you know, I don't really have any questions. I think we explained it last time.
I don't, I don't have any more information to offer. We have received collectively emails of support. It has been out there in the press. It's been publicized. And I do need a vote from the Board today to bring this to the BET the next coming week for their release of the funds, if they are going to release the funds for, for the pool project, so.
And it just, this comes up every year, so what?
So we're gonna call, the title, the retitled should be really provisional. 2016 Provisional Beach Policy. And that's what we do with the, uh, no, pool policy, I'm sorry. That's what we do every year with the beach policy, so the Board gets a chance to vote on it every year. So, but it'll be the 2016 Provisional Pool, uh, Pool Policy. But it won't be in effect until the pool actually opens, which is probably in 2017, so.
So 2016 Byron Park, 2016 Provisional Byron Park?
Pool Policy.
Pool Access Policy?
Yes, that's mine. Even though we don't have a pool at this moment, we have to demonstrate that there is a policy and that the policy will be carried. So it will not go into effect until the pool is, a year that the pool is open, right, to be opened, understand?
Okay, any questions, comments?
Yeah, I do. I have two motions actually. Two motions and a suggestion, fully good. Yeah, I, I, uh, two quick emotions. I fully understand. I'm probably not even gonna second, but, but, no in particular order. The motions are, in terms of the policy itself, allowing for non-residents to access our pool. I think we had a discussion on a limited basis. X amount of people that are, um, not residents of Greenwich allowed to use the pool on a limited or capped number. Uh, the number is yet to be determined. That's number one. And the second motion is to consider to place a one-time fee of X amount of dollars for access to the pool for non-residents to, to use on a yearly basis. Uh, those are the two motions to consider, and then I have a, then I have a suggestion to entertain that after.
Right, so just so we get the wording for it. So the first motion is to have a number of, a set number of non-residents to use the pool?
Yeah, to, to, yeah, to allow access on a, like a daily number.
That's, that's, what?
Yet to be determined.
On a, on a daily basis?
Yeah. Yes.
This is determined by?
Parks Director. Or the Parks Department. Okay, that's the first one.
So the first motion before us is made by Mr. Marzullo to have a set number of non-residents to use the pool on a daily basis, determined by the Parks Director. Is there a set?
You sure? And then the?
Motion number two. I'll write that one down if you.
Yeah, it, to, to place, to mimic one of the towns in Connecticut, to place a one-time fee of X amount of dollars, determined by the Parks Director. Allowing for non-residents.
With a second, or?
Yeah, with, you know, this, with a set amount of dollars.
So you place a one-time fee with a set amount of dollars to access the?
And the goal is, you know, it, it, that, that itself could, I mean, it's possibly generating some revenue. It also allows for non-residents to access a pool, to access the pool on a limited basis, keeping town residents still at priority. Trying to, don't, like, that's the second motion.
Okay, so motion number two. Do you understand what the motion is? I think, is there a second to that? And then, so, so on, before us is to, is to approve the 2016 Provisional Byron Park Pool Access Policy, which would provide, uh, guests of a resident, they must be accompanied by a Greenwich Season Pass holder for single entry to the pool, beach park pass, five to 64 years of age, eight dollars. A guest of a resident from zero to four with no charge, a senior with single entry park pass, no charge. Again, guests of a resident. A Greenwich resident without a season pass, so they must show proof of residency, which means they haven't opted to purchase the annual park pass. Single entry for five to 64 years of age would be eight dollars. A senior without season pass, but with a single senior entry pass would be no charge. And then a single entry beach pass for five to 64 years is seven dollars. And for children, for zero to four, no charge. Parking is required on all category, all categories without a resident vehicle sticker and that fee was set previously at 35 dollars. So is there a motion to move?
So who?
The second. So this is down with somebody?
I have a suggestion if you would entertain this. I, I, I would vote for this under, under one, one condition, if it possibly would entertain this. Is it possible for us to put a, once this goes into effect, is it possible to have a one-year where we revisit this policy? Meaning, our Board is being asked to vote right now, have it two, three years, you know, out of ban, when we really haven't got the chance to vet the, whether or not the demand was there, whether or not how it's working, whether or not if it's, if it's, if it's, I feel uncomfortable voting for a ban prior to even knowing how it's going to work. The pool is not for another two, three years. So I would vote for this if, if it could be brought back after a year for another vote to reevaluate it.
Do you want me to answer, Peter?
Yeah.
I think, I think that what we're really saying in tight end with the, the 2016 Byron Park Provisional Pool Access Plan
is that somewhere in the future, the Board, this Board of Selectment, another Board of Selectment could then have the opportunity to review the plan. This is a similar process that we do with the beach card or the park pass. Every year we call it the X, 2000 and X Park Pass Plan, which gives it the opportunity to come in front of the Board of Selectment each year, so.
The difference is, Joe, that, correct me if I'm wrong, the difference is that what comes before the Board every year though, for us are voting on fees. This is, this?
No, no, the policy comes in front of the Board every year.
It, it does, but there, there has never been, correct me if I'm wrong, a policy on a full ban though, since I've been on the Board.
Well, we're not talking about, we're talking about, we're talking about, the, the policy comes in front of the Board every year and you as the Board of Selectmen could change that policy if you could get the other Selectmen to agree. So what we're really saying is that the Provisional Beach Park Pass Policy could be changed by the Board of Selectmen annually if they wish. This is going to be the same process, is that there'll be a Provisional Pool Policy and you as the Board of Selectmen could change that every year if you like. I don't set the policy. I recommend it. I just, and I recommend the fees, but you as the Board could do that. So by calling it the 216 Byron Park Provisional Pool Pop, Access Policy, I would strongly recommend that you allow the policy to work for a season or two to see how it works. And then if some Board down the line wants to change it, or you're still on the Board then, then you could make a motion to change the policy.
And that, and that's what I'm looking for, but I would like it if we could, if, if not, if the Board, I, I would like to, if I'm here, Peter or John are here, for the Board, for you to, it has to be, yeah, yeah, to you, yeah, to bring it. That it has, that it has to be revisited, and if they don't revote again on it, is what I'm trying to get at. I want another revote to see, not, not, if, if, to see how it's been going, that's what. Not, not if we can take it up or not.
I think, to us, and what we're really talking about is that the BET wants the Board to set a policy. You agree to this, you set the policy, even though in 216, we're not going to have a swimming pool. I mean, maybe we should call it the 217 Policy because we're anticipating that we're going to open up a pool in 217. But it's a policy that you're setting today. So in 217, I would reckon, strongly recommend that, that let the policy work for a season and see what happens before it gets reviewed in 218. So do we want to call it the 216 or the 217?
Well, we're acting on it in 216, so, I mean, I think in some respects, it's in 216. And as you said, it's not going to be applied likely depending on the kind of construction to 217. And then I think to, to Selectman Marzullo's point, I mean, we do review these annually, so it will, his concern, we've got a draft, as I see it, is we have to look at this every year.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
Okay, we do look at it every year.
You do. You look at the, you look at the court pass policy every single year in your fee packet. It's the first page of the other fee packet.
I still, if, if, Mr. Chairman, if you can entertain, I guess then another. I, I, I would like it, I, I understand that it's going to be brought back to us. First of all, I think it should be, we're voting on, once again, something that's not for 2016. So I think it should be changed to 217. We're asking it to be, this Board, from the, and this is a BET directive, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, they're asking a policy, but a policy, it, yeah, I, I have a hard time, I'm, yes, I'm having a hard time voting on a policy when we haven't, the pool isn't built yet. How many people are going to be accessing, I mean, this is odd.
But their thinking is, is a logical one. They're asking the Board, who governs the utilization of town resources, to make a determination upfront before they release the funds to go spend so that it truly comes back to, to me, a prioritization of use. And the priority should be given to Greenwich residents, the people who reside here, who pay the taxes here, who pay the rents and the, and the mortgages to live in a community so that they have use. I mean, it might provide everybody everything, but ultimately someone has to pay for it. And I think that's what they want to know, and I think we're being responsible, just make the determination today. It could always be readdressed by another Board in subsequent years, but to do, to not do it, I think, is to dumb our nose at them and risk delaying the project.
I think so.
So then, and I, okay, if I, I get that. Once again, I will vote in favor of it if we can somehow make it a provision that after a season, whenever this pool is built, 17, 18, whenever, it has to come back. I mean, meaning, and there has to be a vote by the Board. It's, in other words, it expires. That's what I'm saying, it expires, and then they have to revote, not just to take a look at that. So after a year?
Right, I hear what you're saying, but we do that though. In practice, we do that. So if you want us to?
But it doesn't expire in the, in the minutes.
Since, since 2001, we've developed the Park Pass Program, it's been in front of the Board of Selectmen every year. It says 2002 Park Pass Program, three, four.
But they don't have to, what I, what I want, what I want, I, I understand that, but what I want to happen is whoever the Board is, whoever the makeup of the Board is, that they affirm the policy formally. Again, they adopt it again based on whatever changes, if there has to be made, you know? So it expires, they have to take it up after they have seen what has been going on, you know?
So what you're saying is that Provisional Policy should be included in the fee packet every year for review? That's what you're saying?
No, I'm really saying that they have to vote, they have, what I'm saying is that the Board of Selectmen has to vote again. That's, no, we don't have to necessarily vote every single time. We can just, like, look at it and then, and then say, we don't have to bring it up. I want the next Board to have to bring it up after.
Since I am relabeling it every year for the current date, so I'm not going to come to you in my fee package for 2017 and say, here's the 2016 Beach Policy. I'm going to say this is the 2017 Beach Policy, so it forces you to vote on it every year. So why would you vote on something in 2000, you know, 2017 for 2017 that is listed 2016? So it's going to be updated every single year in the fee packet, and you'll have an opportunity?
I hear you, Joe.
To do what you want to do. Vote on it, not vote on it?
To me, it doesn't force the Board of Selectmen to have to vote, but, but, I, I hear you. I do.
So what Board can't bind another Board?
Well, we can't, if, if, if it expires, they'll, they would have to take it up again. They would, if you want a policy.
That's why it's going to be dated annually.
But that's why it's annual. I think that's, if you want to put the word annual in, then?
Well, I think provisional, you know, provisional, to me, gives us an option, by definition, to change the policy, modify the policy, or re-up the policy that we currently are working with and go forward.
So within, almost you're saying, so within, it could be within a year, not just a year. I mean, keeping the word provisional was, was?
You can have a special meeting of the BOS in, in the middle of the season saying, we're going to change the policy.
So I think that's why they use provisional, the meeting.
Yes, that's why we use provisional.
Okay, we're, okay. The next Board should have the ability, like you said, I know they're going to have, should have the, the same ability. I, I get the ability parts, but they should be afforded the same. I mean, but we're voting on, once again, we're voting on a policy. The pool isn't built yet. So we're voting on a ban. We might, we, we might not even know if a ban is even warranted. If, you know?
You should call it a ban.
A ban on non-residents. Well, it is. What is it? What do you call it?
It's a policy for residents to have access to the pool and their guests.
Yes, banning non-residents.
No, non-residents are allowed.
Providing them assurance that they're spending their money to, their tax money to build so that they could use it. Because I think something that we've heard, we've heard is that, why are you spending all this money, people? You've got so many competing, who are you building this pool for? And I think it's entirely right that we answer the question so that we don't jeopardize the project. Because I could easily see people saying, you're going to let it? We don't want it. And there are people who feel that way because they've written to us, so.
Yeah, so then, and I fully agree with that, just in, in, for the record, all six emails that we received were all in favor of this, this policy.
Or something like that.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, there were a few. I mean, I, I was getting copied in on the other, once a few, same.
Can I just make that motion then?
We have the motion before, which is the, the policy, so you can move to amend the motion.
Can I, can I amend that with the, with amend, and I've got a second on this one? Amend it that after a year or a season, whenever the, 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 the pool was built, that the, it expires and the Board of Selectmen will have to bring it up again, but expires, so if you, they would have to vote, they would have to vote again on the?
So your amendment essentially is saying that it's a, it's, it's got an expiration date, a one-year expiration?
Which we, which we have done many times before, expiring, reevaluating things and whatnot. I don't see the downfall. I don't see a downfall of that, actually. And I would vote, and I would vote in favor of that.
No, it's convinced me I can't vote.
No, so, no, but I, but I don't know what the downfall, I, I don't know what the negative to that.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with you, but I think, I, I see that already happening now.
Like, it just reacquers, I think. I think it just, it, it brings necessarily a, but I will, but it, if I get a second there, I will vote in favor of that then. If I can just get that, so the next, after it's done, there could be a reevaluation again.
How do you feel about that? I mean, to me, it's?
It would be, it would be my, it would be my intent, my intent as a Director to put this in the fee package every year, put the updated year on it, unless otherwise directed. Now, I mean, I report to the First Selectmen, so.
Just a one-time, and then, and then it will be, once, once it's reevaluated.
We vote on it.
Huh? Once it's re, once it's reevaluated. Come on, give me a second on this. Now you got a three-zero vote. Come on.
I, I mean, it's my intent, unless otherwise directed, to do that. I mean, I've done it.
Yes, I think.
The last 15 years on the park, I don't see why it would be any different.
Okay, so, so the motion?
The amendment to the motion is to, is to specify that it's for a one-year?
Yes.
Period.
So one year of operation, because if next year we get into the summer, we don't have a pool because of construction delay, I don't think it's fine.
That's up to you, whatever you agree.
Say one year of operation.
That's fine, one year of operation, yes.
So it's a move in second, and all those in favor of that amendment? If anybody's saying aye? So one opposed, nay?
Two.
All right, so, I tried.
Okay, so now the motion as it originally stands. All further discussion, anybody here? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Joe, thank you. Okay, so, for those who may have been in the meeting, under Old Business, item number two will be back before us at a subsequent meeting. There's considerable changes to the Declaration of Preservation Restriction Amendment. That brings us to item number three, which is New Business. And again, as I mentioned in the beginning, there is the request from the Board of Education for municipal improvement to abandon portions of the Church Street, Richard Street, and Lebanon Avenue right of way. Total of 23,058 square feet. We're delighted to have with us today the Chairman of the Board of Education, Laura Erickson, Managing Director of Operations, Jim Ricky, Facilities Management Director, Ron Matlin, Claire Kilgallen, your Vice Chair, Secretary?
Building.
Building Committee, Lebanon School, and Hard Worker Nick McRae from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and their representative to the Lebanon School Building Committee. So you can share with us, we got to receive the materials. And as I said at the outset, we were, we were aware that this would be coming forward when we, we were going through the other MI. And I know that, I just want to acknowledge too, we have Selectman Marzullo, who's the Board of Selectmen's representative, and he had raised questions. So maybe you want to take the?
No, no, I think it's, I think Nick is, someone's better than I, actually, than Lauren. Great, thanks.
Good morning, Board of Selectmen. Nick McRae, I'm not to the?
I'm, I'm recording this, so at least we're, we're still gonna pick our parts to take down.
Good morning, Board of Selectmen. Nick McRae, I'm the executive member from Planning and Zoning to the New Lebanon Building Committee. And the materials I just handed out detail the request for the right-of-way abandonment for Church and Winston and Richard Street. We're requesting this to facilitate a zoning solution for side yard setback and frontage requirements for the new proposed building. I stacked with the zoning enforcement officer and the town planner to discuss this issue. And we're kind of agreeing that this is the best solution for placement of buildings. And the building's been pushed forward towards the field to, and now efficient in that front yard setback of required 25 feet. The, I handed in front of you, details, the information for the specific locations and the areas for the abandonment and where the school building is going to be placed. And these dotted lines below, through the right-of-way, is the current asphalt paved area that's there. Just a little background information, that asphalt paved area is the result of an MI from the 90s, or actually, 2009. During the renovation of the library, Byron Shrewell Library, that request was put in to create a temporary parking area for staff in a space that was actually a gravel road at the time. And the MI was granted, nine spaces were put in. The gravel area was improved, but asphalt, and a gate was provided at the best of Dick Richard Street residents to prevent through traffic going through that area. And it was actually subsequently made permanent through another MI. So the, the parking that was created, those nine spaces can be retained for the school. And right now, it's accessed by a approximately 12-foot wide driveway that's contingent to the library parking. There is a service gate that's chained and locked at all times, except for maintenance and snow, that kind of thing, where the trucks, actually, the town trucks used it to get to. So we're proposing, I'll show you why I'm gonna get a map here. Again, this is the right-of-way area. It's contingent with a property line here, and a property line here. That's the location of the existing gate, and the red line is the school. This is in Lebanon Avenue. This is Church Street, and that's Richard Street. The proposal to the school, put to, abandon those portions of the right-of-way here, continue Richard Street to its, to its end, and then connect our service area to the back of the building here. This is the library parking. Improve this area and retain four spaces for access to the building from that location. And then abandon all of the asphalt area in this area. And put in what's called a grass paver, which would be a grass surface that's actually structurally sound for access for emergency vehicles. And then provide a gate here and here, these two big areas, so we would, would have that through-traffic issue. Even though this is grass, you would be able to drive on it, or emergency vehicles would be able to drive on it, so the gate would be here to here, to prevent that unless they need access to it. As part of this, there would be a new sidewalk through here, and then access, and progress from the building at this location, so the children can actually just cross-ride into the playground here. I've indicated in the handouts there, the truck information for the site. In discussions with the school staff, we're looking at a daily food truck, a daily milk truck, two weekly district maintenance trucks for repairs, et cetera, with the building so, four weekly trash pickups, and two monthly district supply drop-ons. And that would actually come to the back of the building here. And then to the front entrance, to actually administrative offices, UPS mail and office supplies. And that actually comes to the front of the building, and it's, it's delivered to the initiation spaces inside. This truck traffic would actually only occur during the 180 days of the year, 180, five days of the school year. And it actually primarily operates in the morning areas, the morning hit hours, to the service area here and back. Right now, actually, every once in a while, we get a trash pickup that can close the drop-. off, and it's actually quite an interesting dance sometimes. I've included also photographs of samples of what the trucks are, for your reference. Actually, the track color is phenolphthale, so actually, it's the size of the truck. We are in the process of, or if you are planning approvals, and as part of the approval process, to satisfy that zoning requirement, the question is right-of-way abandonment for that area. Thank you.
Great. Just a question, the, the, the budding neighbors, just in terms of, do we know if, I mean, the notice has been sent out, I mean, we'll wait a week and it'll be in the paper and whatnot, but thanks for coming on this.
As part of the zoning process, zoning review process, the property owners of the property are notified, so notifications have been out to some Richard Street property owners already.
And they're notified that, not just...
They were notified of the scope, household of the project, which includes that word of ban.
Including though, that it's going to be now accessed by some trucks at certain times, that...
No, actually, the notification that the neighbors specifically says that there is going to be a project here, if no persons are concerned.
I don't think they, they know that it's going to, as limited as the truck industry is, that, that is going to be a change, and something that's been that way for years and years and years, so, how do we, we have...
Ken can help us out.
Yeah, we'll have a week to, we're not voting on this until next week.
Ken, do you need the materials so you can put it out there for us in the most that we've communicated?
Yeah, that's all that's...
That's fine.
And there's a chance for them to, whatever, for next week, that's all.
I think, I just took the handout again.
Yeah.
I was also at the RTM District Core Meeting last night, and I apprised all the members of the, what the MI was and what it involved in the service issue. Any other questions?
If not, thank you very much. Again, as I said, you alluded to this earlier, when, for the other MIs, and we will be acting affirmatively on it next Thursday.
We'll be acting affirmatively.
All right, you got me. I'll tell you that, you got my, my... But in, in terms of, I'm just, I just, to allow people to manage their time, do we think we need everybody to come next Thursday? What is your pleasure? I just know that we have a million other things, it's also the school vacation week as well, so.
So unless we hear an overwhelming amount of non-support for it, we'll have, now, it's your day of routine, I'd actually say.
Okay, let's, we'll, we'll...
I can be available, so, basically, just to say, it should be very routine.
Okay, so if for some reason it will, we'll communicate to Laura, and you, you may be here.
That'll be fine.
Great.
Enjoy your vacations.
So, is there, is there business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Nick.
That's great.